Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so I'll first, yep. Planning zoning ability committee.
I'll make the motion.
Second. I'll second.
Alderman Artwoods.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Carr.
Here.
Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
Alderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Arti Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Quorum, so I have approval of minutes for the meeting June 12, 2025, planning zoning ability committee.
I'll make the motion.
Second. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And one more important recommendation is a parking IGA in Wooddale, with the Wooddale Park District, that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor? So, Mr. Alderman Woods.
Yeah, just one, one question. I'm, I'm assuming it's going to mirror up to whatever the dates are, but it said the dates are on exhibit fee and there was no exhibit fee. Add one in there. I'm okay with what we're doing. Probably should have the date.
Is the first, oh, go ahead, Stacey.
I think we need, we will provide the, the dates of our events. It's something that's important, so we'll wait for your reaction.
The first, okay with it?
Uh huh, yep.
Secondary?
You made the motion.
Well, I just, no, somebody else seconded down there. Oh, it's all right, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, I got a report and recommendation for e-bike revisions. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not, yeah, yeah, take it away, take it away from our. You've done it, you've done it to me before. Report recommendation for, oh, no, I'm done. I didn't even consider for future meetings. Didn't want to be on this board, I wouldn't be on that his board.
Feel free, take over.
No items, therefore, see, make a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, re-adjourn.
I'd like to call the Public Health Safety Judiciary and Ethics Committee to order, let them intake or reflect that the same members are present. First, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 24, 2025?
To move.
Second.
Any questions, corrections, changes? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes next. Important recommendation, e-bike code revisions. Deputy Chief.
I just brought that up.
Thank you. Today, we're looking to make the adoption of the proposed amendments to Chapter 15 recommending securing the city's traffic code into alignment with the current definitions based on the IBC. And to clarify the treatment of electric and gas powered bicycles, scooters, electric personal assistance, mobility devices, motorized toy vehicles, mopeds and gas powered motorized vehicles. Updating bicycle code provisions will improve clarity for enforcement, provide consistency where users ensure accountability where appropriate, and maintain regulations that are current, practical, and aligned with the existing law. Key focus of the proposed amendments is to clarify where various classes of bicycles, scooters, and personal mobility devices may operate within the city. The proposed amendments categorize vehicles in alignment with the IBC and ITASKA restrictions, specifying permitted and prohibited areas of operation. The proposed amendments to Chapter 15 also address parental responsibility as parental responsibility serves a critical public safety enforcement function. An impound and release provision that has been included which authorizes the city to impound vehicles, bicycles, excuse me, low speed electric and gas bicycles, low speed electric scooters, and electric personal assistance mobility devices. When operated in violation of the city code of manner, that endangers public safety. The provision allows for this impoundment under specific circumstances such as violations of failure to comply with lawful order or involvement in an accident resulting in injury or property damage. If the city agrees with the proposed amendments to Chapter 15, staff will prepare the appropriate ordinance for approval at a council meeting. And once approved, they compare comprehensive outreach and people conducted, including flyers, social media posts, and newsletter information. This will help ensure that the residents and parents.
Is that the end of the?
That's the end of my answer.
Geez, I thought you were going to go on. There's a lot of pages here.
Short and sweet.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Would like you to get off the hook. So, the, the info sheet that we're going to put out, I'm assuming that there'll be some graphics there because that's the big thing, everybody understanding what each one of these things are. Now, I know that ITASKA put something out that was nice. Elk Grove just recently put out a piece that was nice describing what the, the things are. And I, when I thought about it and talked to some people, it's like, you know, you, you really have to print it for a fifth grader because, right, those are the ones we're talking about, the, the younger kids looking at it so that they understand it. Maybe it can be distributed in the schools too. I think that that was ITASKA's approach if I remember their meeting correctly. So, that, that's all good. Will, will we be able, will you have that for the next meeting? Would you be able to have that document?
I'd say yes, but I don't want to make a guarantee that it will be available next week.
Okay.
We are working on it though currently.
Manager, remember this?
Yeah, I just, I hope, basically tonight is kind of like a two-pronged approach. Basically, we don't want to recreate the wheel, right? We want to basically improve our definitions, so allow the police department a better opportunity to enforce some of this stuff because our code is outdated. And second of all, like you talked about, we want to make sure we have a public information piece out there. But we can't really finalize the public information piece until we know direction you guys want to go if you're in agreement with the definition changes tonight. We, I've directed staff to make sure that next Friday, we're prepared to roll out those public information pieces based upon what happens tonight. So, we should, in theory, be ready to roll out next Friday, once the council ratifies next Thursday. And we're not going to recreate the deal with a lot of these pieces either. We're going to piggyback on what ITASKA did because ITASKA and Wooddale has kind of open go and we're right next to each other. So, we want to kind of piggyback on what they had, use a lot of their same messaging. And we should be good to go, but I mean, there may be some other information that takes another week or two to get out there, but we're going to have a whole commit out next Friday.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yeah, well, you have the same provisions that Elk Grove put on, they were just on TV tonight about impounding the vehicle, the child being picked up by the parents and parents being fined.
Deputy Chief.
Yeah, we, we hit slightly different than Elk Grove. I, we've looked at Elk Grove and I don't want to be critical of it, but there's some things that are different. There is an impound provision in here for the, and there's also parental responsibility. Those are, you know, kind of last resort. And as the chief said, you know, the impound is going to happen, you know, only if we've got, you know, there's, there's five different categories. You know, if it, they're a public safety risk, if there's an accident, there's injuries to, or property damage. So, it would be very limited to those circumstances where the, you know, if they don't comply with a lawful order, they would be, then that would be a basis for the impound. And then it's, it's treated much like if you, we have an impound for vehicles, that if they get impounded as a result of a violation of a traffic violation, they can be impounded. You have to prove that a violation didn't exist. It's kind of the same statutory scheme for due process purposes. It gives everybody, you know, that, that opportunity. I don't think the police department's interested in, you know, hosting a lot of e-bikes or scooters or anything. So, that would really be, you know, more last resort for somebody who simply will not comply or has been engaged in really reckless behavior.
Manager, remember this?
I was also going to say, one of the, one of the things that we feel is very important is we want to make sure enforcement is great sometimes, all the time. I don't think we want our police officers chasing down 12-year-olds on dirt bikes. A big part of this, like you said, is the outreach and we want to rely on parents' education. Get that outreach out there, what is illegal and what is not, because a lot of parents probably don't know. So, if we can have that off before the kids are out there with dirt bikes or whatever, they're riding in the dirt block, that's the vibe, it's illegal. So, outreach is more important than enforcement, but we need the enforcement with the updated definitions.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yeah, for deputy chief, as far as enforcement goes from a tactical perspective, how do you tell from far away, one of the officers is in their cruiser, how are they going to determine what level that bike is at, right? You can't, I know they're, in the packet, it said they're going to have stickers on them explaining how, you can't just randomly stop every electric bike you see and investigate the stickers. Is that really the only way?
I agree with him, yes. It's going to be tough.
Okay.
I was talking to, I believe the mayor earlier, he's been talking about actually stopping and detaining people. They have to have legal.
Exactly.
And just the hunch that if the person is underage or riding something illegal, who's not able to act on that, we're going to have to do a lot more due diligence of, like, what's involved. It could be more of a traffic violation or some other violation that we're going to find.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment before I call on the rest of the people. So, going back to the graphic or the, whatever we're putting out, the information piece. So, so part of it is the, so everybody understands the terminology, right, that we're using now, and that's one of the corrective actions we're taking, correct? And what class each one of those things are, moped, that's why I even need more, because I don't write any of them, so I couldn't tell one from the other. But I think the other piece and piece that's important and was lacking really, and whether it was Elk Grove's piece or ITASKA's piece, I've seen some stuff out of Lombard. Is the parent piece and what those fines and fees are. So, I don't see that. We see a lot of information and these are what the bikes are and this is where you can ride them. But as we're having this meeting, we're talking about, we like to get the buy-in from the parents. But it's that information. So, that's in part what I wanted to see, right? And I get that cart and horse thing that you were telling me, city manager. But that piece is going to be just as important as anything else because again, the police department's not going to go chasing bikes when they run or be able to stop every one of them from moving forward. Manager, remember this?
Yeah, I think what we, the goal of tonight was to update the definitions, make sure all of those are approached, or if we wanted to go a little more aggressively, I don't think the council wants to do, but I don't know that until we discuss it. And then on the back end, we were obviously going to work on some of these promotional informational pieces, which obviously I didn't want the council to let that out. That's more of a staff initiative job. But I had talked to Masilva, and certainly like, for example, the newsletter, we were going to prepare a piece geared towards the parents, so they're educated on what is illegal, what is not illegal. So, one of our primary focuses has been parent outreach. That's been a part of our strategy.
Okay.
Just adds to that.
Attorney bond.
Yeah, just adds to that too. There's a, there is a master fee schedule, so that's something, obviously, you need to have some, some saying what, what that would be in terms of, you know, is there going to be parental responsibility? There's a lot of advantages to having that, but then, you know, what's the, the appropriate dollar amount? And I think that's something that the staff would be looking for some direction as to what that, that might be. And I think from a timing standpoint, if, you know, little Jimmy's going to get one of these for Christmas, you know, if you guys can get that messaging out to, I don't know if little Jimmy's going to or not, but you, you get that information out before somebody, you know, parents are saying, okay, that's what the Christmas gift's going to be or a birthday gift or whatever. But having that parental responsibility, some of the statistics have shown that fatalities on these kinds of e-bikes has gone down from when they first came out and they attribute that to the regulation. The state, you know, in public Senate bill 1960 had it, so they rechange the definition and really empowered municipalities and park districts in the county to have that kind of regulatory authority. And to your point, Alderman Arti Woods, you know, I don't think this is intended for the, the police department to run around and look for every 15, 16-year-old. It's much like, you know, if you've got a kid who looks like a 12-year-old and driving a car, they'll just pull him over for that reason. They'd have to have some other basis. So, it would be more, if there's an infraction, then they would do and they would be able to look like they would with a vehicle, getting your, your, you know, your driver's license and getting your registration, same type of thing. The bikes all have the, the note, everything's on the bike itself where you'd be able to see what the wattage is and all the different criteria, so.
Alderman, Nadine Ames?
I guess I just have a few things. So, about the public communication piece, whenever that's finalized, perhaps putting it in with the water bill too. I think that message was, there was a couple of advertisements in the water bill and that's, who's opening is the parent. So, hopefully, if they're not on social media or look at the website, that would be a great way, you know, to hopefully make sure that they see that. So, then after the, I guess, the approval of, you know, the terminology in here, so will some of the things on the next step be like, if there's like a speed limit that they can't go over? I know some of the bikes are limited to how fast they can go, so is that part of what style bike it is, is, they would be speeding? Because I know some of these scooters and bikes can go pretty fast, which is over the speed limit on some of our streets. So, is that part of, will that be part of the guidelines as well? Like, they'd get a speeding ticket?
Deputy Chief?
Not part of the guidelines at this point, and it's going to be very difficult to get a speed rating on a moped or e-bike or something. They don't have enough masks on them for the radars to really detect them very well. Like a car coming at you, there's a 2,000 pound vehicle, it has enough bounce back from the radar waves and the laser beams to give you that reading. You're not going to get a good, precise enough speed from a radar gun to enforce a speed. And I don't, I don't know yet, but I don't think it would be out of the law as a, as a tool to use for us.
Okay, I didn't realize that. And then, I guess, to further, I just had a bunch of questions too, like some of the other communities are saying that riders had to have a valid driver's license. Is that something that would be in the next steps as well?
Deputy Chief?
That's not part of our proposal at this time, but if that's the direction you want to go, the council, I guess, has to change.
Okay. Sorry, I just have like a couple more. I have a list. So, some of the other things were, where the, the e-bikes and scooters were not allowed, like within park areas or things like that? Is that something that was addressed? There was just a lot to read in here about what, what was changed and scratched out and too, and I didn't know if that was something under consideration? Or if the park district has chimed in on this at all for any of their land for use?
Deputy Chief?
Without going too far into it, I know we have a couple of notes on here about what parks are not available and what is not allowed in the chart that we gave you guys. But I'd have to dive a little deeper to see specifically about the parks and to see if the park district even wanted to limit, must, Mr. Brown has something else to add.
Attorney bond.
Yeah, no, I would, I would concur with that. And the parks are, and I think we actually have a note in case you go forward with another park and with the designation of that. The park districts do have the authority under the statute and a number of our, we represent some park districts, are exploring what they can do to do the regulations within their jurisdictional boundaries, whether it's incorporated or unincorporated. And that's a work in tandem with the city as to what kind of activity. But there are specific ones that Deputy Chief indicated that are referenced in the, in the document you have.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, you have a follow-up?
I did, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So, would the e-bikes, e-scooters, would they have to be registered similar to like a car registration in the city? To pay, you know, we pay for a sticker for the vehicle?
We don't have that in our playbook.
Okay.
Follow-up. Attorney bond?
Yeah, and, and to do that would be, you know, then you're kind of licensing the registration and it's, it's going to be cumbersome. It'll be a lot of paperwork and, you know, it, it's not going to be worth it because you may have some that are registered and they're doing everything they're required to do. So, it's really going to be identifying those that are not. And then, so, it wouldn't be necessary to get all of them registered. That wouldn't further, I don't think, any law enforcement purpose for that, to distinguish the good riders from the bad riders, the good actors from the bad actors.
Okay.
Alderman Carr?
To bring up the registration, like Nadine suggested, I know a couple of towns that allow golf carts and stuff, you have to register and get a plate. So, I wouldn't be opposed to having each scooter be registered that's, you know, to have a plate to be presented on the actual scooter. So, this way, ones that don't have plates, the cops could pull over at least and say, hey, you're not registered, you know, you can't be driving this on the street. You know, that would be my theory because if they get it registered, they know the streets, they have a driver's license, they're able to stop at stop signs, pay attention for cars, know the rules and regulations of the road.
Wants to take that. Attorney bond? Want to tell me how, like, can legally or not legally do that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't have, we don't license them to these, like, you'd be issuing a license, so we don't have the licensing authority. In some communities, they, with different road systems, do license golf carts and so forth. And we, we don't, we don't, we haven't, we've not done that because of the, you know, composition of the roadways that we have. There's not really too many you would be able to ride a golf cart down without some of the major thoroughfares. So, could you, could you register? You could legally, you could do that. It's just, it's going to, it's not going to advance the enforcement of the, of what's being presented to you to regulate these e-bikes necessarily.
Alderman Currielli?
Are, are we doing anything here that would cause problems with any of the neighboring towns? Are our regulations more strict or less strict or they're consistent that, because people aren't going to keep their bikes in town and there's going to be bikes from other towns coming into Wooddale.
They can't cross the border.
Okay, thank, I didn't know that, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Chief?
We're staying in line with ITASKA. Is there one of our neighboring communities that does, you know, a lot of crossover from us? We're not going to the level of Elk Grove, even though they border us to the north. There's a lot of industrial park that barricades the two of us. We don't see a lot of people going that way. Addison has just passed there about a month ago, maybe. We're still looking into a comparison of that one and seeing what they put in, but it's very similar. It's the exact same, like ITASKA, it's a lot closer to what we have. Mansville, from what I'm being told by the deputy chiefs over there, they have not made any changes at this point and they don't have any time to add this one.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, please.
Yeah, uh, sorry. The water bill definitely, I had that on my list here because the parents are going to open that. I heard about.
Lucky they pay the bill.
I heard about impounding. I'm like, wait a minute, so you're going to take the scooter away from the 10-year-old kid and make him walk home? Are you bringing him to the station? You know, how do we handle these things? The biggest concern for me is the speed, right? I've seen twice now, a guy coming down Wooddale Road, I was at, pulling up to the stop sign, he's going southbound. I know he saw me. He didn't even look to see if anybody was coming off of Wooddale Road, he just went right through. And we're talking about somebody who's probably closer to 50 years old and he was moving. There was no 10 miles an hour on that thing. The other, the other guy was either high school or college kid. And he was moving faster than I was on the street. I think maybe I was about 15 miles an hour. And this guy's cooking on the sidewalk ahead of me, and I think he was tick-talking or something. He had his phone up in the air. I think the speed and, on this bikes, I mean, and I, I heard what you said about the radar and all that. Is, is there going to be some way to control the speed and, and whatnot? I mean, the little kids, I had four of them, they were, I saw them stopped on the side streets as I was coming down my block going towards Wooddale Road. I was in the right lane. The four of them just turned right into the left lane. I mean, they turned into the right lane, but I'm not even sure they were really paying attention to me. They could have waited five seconds and I would have passed them. Safety is kind of at the forefront here and parents basically do need some kind of guidance because I don't think they know what their kids are doing, some of them. So.
Any comment to that? No?
Sure, the, the speed is a definite problem for us, but again, trying to regulate it and trying to guess that speed is going to be very difficult for us. On the common side of it, we take juvenile into custody for other offenses and we call their parents. Usually, that's what happens. We have a juvenile officer involved, that's a whole different.
So, you would think, you would bring the, the kid also to the station, I guess?
Yes, it might be a street release tactic too, which can be done, depending on the severity of it. But it would probably be brought back to the station, use some of the paperwork, and then have a parent called to be released to the parent, just like we do with any other juvenile problems that we might deal with on a daily basis. But yeah, the speed, that's going to be a tough one because there should be nothing out there that I know of that can regulate that speed other than what Illinois IBC has put out there, you know, with the limits on it. But telling you what that speed is, it's not going to be easy.
And basically, mostly, both of these guys were on sidewalks, right? So, for couples walking their baby and their dog around the block and these guys are zipping by, hopefully, they go around them, but you know, just, neither one looked like they were looking or paying attention.
And again, that's where the parental education comes into play and trying to make sure that they're teaching their children.
But these, the guy in Wooddale Road had to be close to 50 and the other kid was, had to be at least older, high school kid or college kid. He was older. And both of them were not really paying attention to anything in front of them. They had a helmet though. It's crazy.
So, a couple, now that we're done with that, a couple of questions. One, about the parental liability and fines or fees. I didn't memorize this whole thing. It was a little wordy. It would have been nice to have a redlined copy versus the other to see the changes for future reference. But in some, in one location, it says the fine will not exceed $25. It's just a nuisance fee. And then in another area, it's a class C misdemeanor and it's a $100 fine for first offense. And then second offense goes to class D or, and then to A or whatever. I don't know how the hierarchy is there. And the fines increase, so what really are those fines? Can you kind of just quickly broad overview of walk me through? So, I, I can't tell from my experience because my kids were perfect. They never did anything wrong.
Very true.
But, you know, like a real life scenario, you stop the, the 10-year-old we've been talking about. What happens? First time?
So, juvenile law is very different than adult law. And charging juveniles with actual misdemeanors and felonies is different than charging an adult with it. What you're talking about with the IBC and C misdemeanors, that's getting into the next realm of things. A lot of times with juveniles, when we start to quote an arrest now, it's called a direct file. We actually have to call a state attorney specific to juveniles to detain that, to detain that juvenile and possibly take it even out to King County Correctional Facility where they house the juvenile and stuff. If it was getting to that point, that means that's probably a juvenile offender that's done multiple offenses. It's not going to be the first time that we deal with them.
So, not, not to cut you off, but how did we determine then, do you guys have like cards like they used to have in the old days? When I was a kid, the cops, local beat areas?
Stop card?
Yeah. So, how, how do we keep track of that since they're not adults?
We have an old tracking system here within Wooddale.
Gotcha.
But it's only for Wooddale officers that do the tracking. It's not a county system and the county has never come up with a good enough system to track the juveniles. But in our, in our computers and stuff like that, we have, anytime we have a contact with a juvenile offender, we send it out to what's called our juvenile officer. Basically, of all the officers that have gone through special certification, we're typically dealing with juveniles in juvenile law. Because it's a totally different realm than, than adult law. We keep, basically, an Excel spreadsheet on and monitor what they've done over the course of it. Because if it ever gets to that point of being at the direct file or the next step of, of course, contacting the state attorney and actually detain them, we have to tell them all the past incidents that they were involved in. So, we want to make sure the kids that we're going to deal with on a custody basis, we keep track of them ourselves. We're going through the computer systems, looking for their names and stuff.
Okay. And so, another scenario, since we're directing everybody kind of to the sidewalks, the, the thing that I've run into. the thing that I've run into a couple of times is more than one, you know, three, four, or five kids going down the sidewalk. What do, what do we do with that? They're not really speeding and let's say they're, they're paying attention even. But they are taking up the whole sidewalk. So if anybody else walking, whether they're out walking a dog or themselves, a couple. How do we look at that? How is that addressed? I didn't mean to beat you up tonight, but this, so this is what I'm, so we read this, all the legalese. Now I don't know what that means when, I, I need real life scenarios and I think it helps everybody else up here as we walk through a couple of these. That's what I was talking about with getting the, that graphic out there that we can address some of these because those are the questions that I get.
I don't know that I have a specific answer for the group of four that is riding down the road or riding down the sidewalk. But if we as a police officer were driving and would happen to see that happening, I would be out stopping with those kids and having a stop walk and talk basically.
Okay.
Trying to, hey, what's going on with you guys? You know, didn't you see this couple walking down the street or something along those lines, right? Not necessarily harassing or doing anything to that, but talking to them and teaching them why they think this is a bad thing. Kind of courtesy just to, for people walking, right? As opposed to riding past or going around and things like that. Also following bicycle rules of the road. That would kind of fall into that realm, I guess.
Okay.
Attorney Bond?
It just from, to do sort of an analogy, it would be the same thing if those four kids were walking down the street and wouldn't move out of the way for Mrs. Johnson or whatever. There wouldn't be really a, much of a recourse that the police would have for that. Again, with the scooters or the, the e-bikes, there are rules of the road that apply to bicycles. But you wouldn't really have much other than to stop and say, you know, give them a corrective warning or whatever. So that would be difficult to enforce and, and that does happen with some regularity. I know in downtown Wheaton, they're all over the sidewalks, which is.
Right. And I, I, I get the similarities except for you're not walking 18 miles an hour down the sidewalk. Guys with hoodies on and helmets and stuff. We can't even tell who they are.
And their headphones.
And, right. So that, it's a little different. And I know that you can't cover all the scenarios and we're not going to chase them. It's just good, I think, to talk about some of these. Alderwoman Ames?
Um, yeah, just based on that, you know, talking about what we've either personally seen ourselves or have complaints from residents about just the, the riders not adhering to stop signs or looking for, you know, traffic and just going down the middle of the street. What kind of complaints or do people call 911 about that? Or like from the police department point of view, like how active has that been for the department responding to calls and that nature?
Deputy Chief?
I think since schools let out, we maybe had three the entire summer that it's been happening. So the head is not very frequent. We have more of the motorized dirt bikes that are off-roading in a lot of the areas like any open fields and stuff like that. And then when we roll into that area, they take off and head back to their house. But sidewalks and stuff like that, with scooters, we're not getting any calls on that. I thought I said maybe three since school.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Catalano?
Yes, going back to the informational part of it, we should maybe incorporate like a safety informational, like say for National Nile out, maybe pass out some pamphlets, also put it in our website with a link. That way, you know, yeah, we want to enforce it, but you also want the parents to know that, you know, there's a safety issue here. So I would like to see that and also the water bill is a good idea. Thank you.
So another, to piggyback on that and then we can call the, the vote was, maybe we could do an informational video. I mean, they used to have bike safety courses, right? You could go to Elk Grove and ride the bike as a kid. You learned all the little things. This is a little different. We're probably not going to be able to start up those little towns and, and do that. But maybe we could put some informational video together. There's got to be some information that's already out there. We don't have to recreate the wheel. That kind of addresses some of these things that we were, we're talking about because you can only put so much on a eight and a half by 11 piece of paper. And if you make the print too small, besides nobody reading the, the bill, they're not going to read it. So that being said, does anybody want to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Roll call?
Alderman Artwoods?
Uh, no.
Alderman Carr?
No.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
That passes. Next request for an additional class P liquor license. Going to take that. Deputy Chief?
Yes. This will be increasing the class G liquor license where we can't seem to be able to authorize them to sell and offer the sales or the internet delivery and retail sellers specifically for delivery of alcohol companies.
So what, well, Alderman Arti Woods?
Yeah, is there a presentation on this or? No, okay. I, I was looking at the, the website a little bit. I'm just trying to understand. It looks like they operate, they serve companies and corporate offices stocking break rooms, if I'm reading that correctly. So what does alcohol have to do? They're looking to deliver alcohol to corporate break rooms? And they need a Wooddale liquor license to do that? I'm, I'm, just don't understand.
On a job.
Deputy Chief?
I believe that's the case where they have to get the liquor license they have on purpose so that they can sell it. How it's like a, a delivery.
Then I guess does this limit it to just selling to other businesses or could they also deliver to residences too then?
If the petitioners here, would they like to come up and speak? Say a, say a little bit of.
Oh, I didn't.
Great. Business?
Good evening. My name is Zubin Kamula. I'm counsel for the applicant Compass Group USA. And to answer your question, we do not deliver to residential, residential clients. The company is solely focused on commercial and corporate clients. So for example, my law firm has a kitchen space. Instead of us schlepping out to stock it with coffee or beer and wine, we could hire the Compass Group to do that. You could do the same thing here at City Hall. We have a group of corporate and commercial clients that we cater to for these services. And essentially what they are looking to do is not have to kind of do their own grocery store runs, have like pastries, coffee, beer and wine, just.
Wild combo.
Yeah. That, that's, it's a, it's a simple business model, but one that is moving to be successful.
I guess just one, one follow up.
Alderman Art.
Maybe for Attorney Bond, is there, if we issue this, stopping them from delivering to anyone but companies?
Under the, no, there would not, it would not technically, but they're doing it out of, they're, you got to, doing it out of a facility, right?
That's right. And it's essentially kind of a, it's a warehouse.
Sure.
We don't take walk-up customers.
No, I guess my question is, so is there anything in place that if this goes through and it passes five weeks from now, they decide we're also going to deliver to homes, would they have to come back and ask or they could just do that?
No, they, they would have to come back and ask. It's like a liquor store or a bar saying, I'll bring it to your house, you know, on my e-bike or whatever. So they wouldn't be able.
Well, I know there's services who deliver now, so I don't know if that's a.
And that's a different license.
Got it, thank you.
So in here, I thought I read internet sales or at least the license covers internet sales. I don't know if their intent is internet sales. So wouldn't that be all encompassing? Wouldn't that be a, a home or? I'm just trying to understand it because.
Sure.
I, I think we don't have another business that operates that way.
We, we don't engage in internet sales. We don't have a landing page or a, a link that anyone could, you know, use. The class of license that is available includes those privileges. But that's, that's a function of, of what you've created in terms of that classification. Even if a grocery store, for example, which I think a class P would be what a grocery store also secures just for, you know, traditional grocery store operations, that they could also in theory, I suppose, engage in internet sales.
Yeah, okay. Alderman Catalano?
How long has this business been in Wooddale?
I'm going to ask our.
2017? Okay, thank you.
And hold it by way of background. The applicant had purchased the company that runs that business. So we're essentially just relicensing.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Do you guys have liquor licenses? It looks like you have multiple locations. Do you already have them in place in other towns or is this, would this be the first or?
For other sections, we do.
You do, okay. Thank you.
By way of background, Compass Group USA is a national operator. In the Chicagoland area, we have about, I'd say a hundred and eighty sites. And some of them operate on this model. Some others are actual onsite, like traditional cafeterias at corporate buildings. My building that I have in, that my law firm is at is serviced by the company as well.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve one new class P liquor. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is that okay?
Tony.
So we're good here?
All right. Welcome.
Thank you for your time.
I have an office in my house, so maybe you want to stop by.
Bring it to City Hall anytime too.
Next items to be considered at future meetings, we have none. Is there anything anybody would like to? Marcy, what did you want to add? Nothing? Okay, good. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We're adjourned.
Right, I'd like to call to order the Public Works Committee meeting. Let the note ticker note the same elected officials and staff are present. First, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 12th, 2025.
Second?
Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. A report and recommendation, first approval of a license agreement between the city of Wooddale and Commonwealth Edison Company for installation and maintenance of underground electrical facilities with city rights of way. That is my motion.
Second?
Director Lang?
Thank you, Chair. As we know, ComEd has plans to build a substation on Bryn Mawr Avenue to support the new proposed data centers and to also branch out into substations in the area as well. To do that, they need to run ducts from their transmission yard in Itasca to the proposed substation location. So they've sent us the proposed route that runs along Middle Drive, across Wooddale Road, through Seaver and through some of the other industrial streets, to Bryn Mawr finally. And to accommodate that, they have proposed this master license agreement, which we have reviewed. And our request was is they're putting parallel ducts in the roadway, that they resurface the road from curb to curb in the areas that they will be working. That work would start later this year, if not early next year.
Alderman Artwoods?
Who is paying for all this?
My understanding is that ComEd is paying for their work. I don't know if they have a certain agreement worked out with Cyrus One, but they're just entering into a master license agreement to use our right-of-way space with us.
Follow up? I can follow up. The reason I asked is I went to a couple of those meetings and it was interesting to find out when I asked them. The meeting that I got the answer to the question was the meeting to tie in the two substations, not to go from Itasca to the new substation, but to tie them in. So you had that redundancy going into Elk Grove. But that was said to be passed on to the customers.
And those public meetings are separate from?
Yes, no, I'm, my, if I didn't make that clear enough, they, they were. That's a separate piece from this piece.
All right.
I just didn't know if the answer was the same as, as this piece.
That information I don't have.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderwoman Ames?
So during this time of the construction of all this and the roads are torn up, how do they address the impact to the businesses in the business park along this route?
So they'll have flaggers on site to direct traffic. There'll always be one lane open and if not, they'll set up a detour route for businesses. But really they're going to work in, you know, 100-foot sections as they progress installing the duct. And as they come across businesses, they'll work that individual business to accommodate their needs, whether they have a, you know, additional entrance in another location or providing half the entrance at a time so they can get in and out. They began popping out there already for utility crossings. So letters have gone out to the businesses in that area and should be minimal disruption to the businesses.
Follow up?
Quick follow up. So then they have a engineering contact or somebody, if a business has an issue with a dock access or driveway or parking lot, you know, being blocked, that they have somebody that they can talk to to not impact their operation?
24-hour contact. They provide those through the permitting process. They've sent out their own notices and the city has sent out our notices as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can we do an all in favor on this one? We're not spending any money just for the license agreement? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next approval of an agreement between the city of Wooddale and Concentric Integration LLC for the fiscal year 2026. SCADA upgrades in an amount not to exceed $76,100. That is my motion.
Second?
Director Lang?
So some of the components of the North West Water Fury Plan are already going on 10 years old. So some of those interface modules that we use to control the SCADA system throughout the plant are no longer supported by the manufacturer. So we will be upgrading some of them with disagreement and budgeting for some more at our plants next year as well.
Any questions on this? Roll call please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Finally, approval of replacement of public works vehicles in an amount not to exceed $470,000. That is my motion.
Second?
Director Lang?
All of these vehicles were budgeted for in the capital equipment replacement fund and all the proposals are under the budgeted amount for this year.
Are there any delays still lingering out there for these kind of things or not?
Well, the availability has gotten much better since those directly post-COVID years. So we should have these in relatively short order. The only long lead items are the larger trucks still. So we budgeted those in future years. We might actually place the order this year because the outfitter is actually a year behind. So it may be anywhere from a year and 15 months before we get those large vehicles. But all these are pretty readily available.
And then ballpark, do we know the value of the ones we're getting rid of that we could recoup from? I know that's probably hard to guess, but.
Yeah, we've seen good resale value in recent years, anywhere from a five to $15,000 for small and mid-sized trucks. We usually post them starting at five and just a little bit as they pay the price.
Makes sense. Any questions? Roll call please. I did. I think I did.
Yeah, and I second.
She seconded.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Arti Woods?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderman Curialy?
Yes.
And Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, Water Tower One reconstruction, August 14th. Mary Jane Lane Design, August 14th. Elizabeth Drive MUP Construction, August 14th. Hawthorne Sidewalk, August 14th. HVAC Services Agreement, also August 14th. Anyone have anything they'd like to add? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.